So, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for the Town of Newburgh for the 20th of October 2021. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the Chair for the Newton for Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Yes, President.
Thank you, Larry. George Morse.
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews.
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody Knight. Mary Stone.
Yes.
Very good. Town staff, when I call your name, also please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Emily Noble.
Yes.
Wonderful. Town Council, when I call your name, please also respond in the affirmative. Brian Winner?
Brian Winner is present.
Thank you. We do not have any anticipated speakers or presented on our agenda for this evening. Good evening. This is October 20th, 2021, open meeting of the Newburgh Planning Board, which is being conducted remotely consistent with the acts relative to extending certain COVID-19 measure adopted during the state of emergency, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order of suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law 3820 until April 1, 2022. This order supersedes requirements of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newburgh Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering, excuse me, meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 1-929-2056099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that the attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tncctv.org and the recording will be available on the Newbury YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to review. Applicants and/or their representatives may be called upon to speak if needed or to share information. With regards to our ground rules, before we go to our first item on the agenda, let's just go over a couple of things. I, as the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute and unmute your computer button or your phone with star six to toggle to mute and unmute and when you are not speaking. Please use AirBuds or your phone, tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that will help generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants could see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait for me to yield to the floor to you and state your attention. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do through the Chair so that we can take care to identify when speaking. There will not be an opportunity for public comment tonight. There is no public hearing this evening. With regards to video conference participants, to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and accurately displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand, the Zoom meeting hits star nine on your phone keypad. I then allow questions and comments from members who have raised their hands in order which they are listed. Each participant will be called upon to write his or her name and address and ask any questions or comments. I will afford the applicant or their representatives to respond to the question. We then continue down the list of those with a raised hand column and afford you the, once again, the participant applicant and/or representatives to speak. Should there be any physical electronic submission of questions or concerns, they will be noted again for the record. I believe that we do not have any submission, submission, submission materials tonight, but Martha can correct me.
That's correct.
Finally, each vote taken, this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Okay, let me see. So, that's that. And so I think we'll go right into our old business, which is 105 High Road OSRD Special Permit Decision. So, let me just try to give a recap of where we are right now. So, our public hearing was closed on September 15th, 2021. At that session of the public hearing, the board discussed approval process and reach a consensus. The applicant would be allowed to submit an OSRD site plan versus a subdivision plan. Since this is a condominium development and approval could be one step, i.e. the OSRD Special Permit and the OSRD Site Plan Approvals to be combined in one decision versus separate OSRD Special Permit and a separate OSRD Site Plan Approval. So, we did that at the last meeting. Also at our last meeting, the board directed town council and the planning director draft of decision for the board to review for discussion and possible approval with tonight's meeting. I then asked the town council to actually provide another draft revision and describe what those are. So, I think at this time, I'm going to kind of ask Brian to give us kind of an oversight with the four drafts that we have. Now, everyone has received their drafts. And there was also a diagrammatic that went out with each of those drafts. So, Brian, if you could kind of go through each of the draft decisions, there's only one component that is different. And that's on page 14, correct Martha?
Yes.
And so, that's that one paragraph. And what Brian's going to do is going to take us through option A, option B, option C, option D. And there's going to be a corresponding diagram that will help explain or kind of allow us to understand what those options are. Martha is going to kind of do that diagrammatic as we're doing this discussion. So, Brian, I'm going to turn it over to you for opening remarks and descriptions, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And just one quick note before I dive in. As you noted, we sort of combined what would otherwise be two decisions into one. And while Ms. Taylor and I were going over, we noticed that there were a couple of, you know, relatively standard boilerplate conditions that I think are not controversial at all. They're the conditions you've seen and asked for a number of times in other decisions. So, we can go back to that later on, but I just wanted to note that so we don't forget it as we get through the meeting. So, the highlighted portion of each of the four decisions is really the only thing that's different. It's the only substantive difference between the two. And this paragraph and its four different forms came as a result of, you know, staff level conversations and conversations with your Chair about how to treat the open space. So, each four represents, or each one of the four represents a different approach. And since that's, you know, almost essentially a policy decision the board has to make rather than us presenting you with, you know, one version, we wanted to present you with four so that you would have a final product for whichever choice you made. So, whichever direction the board decides to go tonight, you have a final decision ready to go that reflects that choice. So, Martha, if you have those graphics available, I'll start going in. So, as you know, what we were sort of working on is a concept for the OSRD plan that provided for, you know, open space to be conveyed or offered to be conveyed to the Conservation Commission with a fallback that if they don't have an interest in accepting it as land deeded to the town, then it would revert to the condominium trust, which would then retain the entirety of the open space and maintain it. So, the problem that we encountered in looking at that is, well, where do we draw the line? Where does it make the most sense? So, the condominium association would, or trust would maintain some of it. And the Conservation Commission would be offered the rest of it, but where do we draw that line? So, there's a couple of different options here, and I'm just going to go through them. And then I'd like to sort of say a few words on, you know, what these choices, you know, mean as a practical matter. So, this is version one, and version one obviously reflects decision version one. So, this is what's shown in version one of the decision. And you can see from the notations, what would be offered to the town is the long rectangular shape to the right of the plan. And what would be retained by the condominium trust would be what Martha is hovering over there on the left side of the plan. So, the reason why, you know, the line was drawn as such on this plan is there are certain, you know, design features and infrastructure on that left rectangle that would probably, and you have to decide this, make the most sense for the condominium trust to maintain. So, you've got the bioinfiltration there, basin there, you've got some of the septic components there and some fields that are all going to require maintenance. There's also parking. There's the seashell drive. So, you know, along with those things, which, you know, not only serve the development, but if they're within the ownership and control of the trust, the condominium trust, the trust is going to have the obligation, financial as well as, you know, the day-to-day obligations of maintaining it. So, there are a lot of specs, you know, in the, in the application documents that define what that means and what has to be done. That's a burden that the condominium trustees, as I understand, or, you know, one day, as it will be passed on to them, the applicant is willing and able to take on and desires to take on. And since this serves them as the successors to this property, there's a thought that maybe it makes sense for them to carry that burden and maintain not only the ownership, but all the ongoing maintenance of everything on that site. And I should mention, it's not, it's not just, you know, a decision as to who does what, but that septic is obviously important for them. They need to have access to it. They need to be able to maintain it, replace it, repair it, upgrade it, whatever needs be. And there are certain Title V requirements that they need to comply with at the end of the day, and that's part of it. So, having that on their side or not on their side has significant consequences and ramifications for them. If it's on their land, that's obviously mitigated. They have control. And it solves a lot of their Title V issues. So, that's version one. That's where the division is on version one. Martha, can you switch it to version two? So, now, this is the, sort of the all-in version where the town gets everything. So, if this is the version that the board selects, everything I just talked about would fall to the town. It also, as I mentioned before, creates some Title V problems for the applicant because now their components are located on our land. And without doing too much of a deep dive into that, they have to comply with certain Title V regulations, one of which has a strong presumption that all these components are going to be on their land. So, that would be a major design problem for them. In terms of the consequences to the town, the town, you know, through the Conservation Commission would be responsible for maintaining all the features on the entirety of the open space. So, we're talking about the mowing, the hang, the seashell path drive, the little bog bridges, foot bridges that are along the pathways. So, all that would fall upon the town to maintain in perpetuity. This would be, you know, town land. So, that carries with it, you know, ongoing maintenance obligations, but also day-to-day obligations. You know, if there's an obstruction on one of the paths or something, someone has something to complain about, they're going to call the town about all of that stuff. So, there's a, there's a large stewardship that comes along with the town maintaining the entirety of it. So, that's version two. Can we go to version three? So, version three is sort of the in-between. So, the majority of the open space gets conveyed to the town, but we carve out the infrastructure features that serve the development. So, you see over where there's the block A, so the seashell drive, bioinfiltration basin, the Title V components, those would be retained by the condo, but the remainder would go to the town. So, that's the largest, you know, short of everything, that's the largest portion that would go to the town. But again, you know, all the burden that comes along with that would also fall on the town. And there's another consideration to think about in this version, which is now you've got sort of a division of labor here. So, you've got the condominium doing that, you know, maintaining the front portion A, and then the town maintaining B. And you're not obviously going to see this line, you know, out in the, in the real world. So, the town would have to cross over an easement over A. And then, you know, hey, you know, the field there and maintain everything beyond it. But there would be an entirely separate, you know, presumably a separate, you know, contracted organization or crew doing parcel A. So, the, it's kind of an odd, you know, division of labor because you could foresee circumstances where it's, you know, a different crew or uncoordinated, you know. The town has different obligations in terms of procuring services. So, as a practical matter, there could be a disconnect there where you have, you know, two separate entities almost side by side maintaining what, you know, for all appearances would look like the same open space. So, that's version three. And then version four is kind of the fallback option, which is the condominium trust just keeps it all. So, there would be a conservation restriction. So, none of these options really have to do with, with those conservation values or open space values. Those are going to be preserved in a conservation restriction or deed, et cetera. So, those, those aren't in question. It's really a question of stewardship, management, ownership. And in version four, there's no town ownership. The entirety of the open space is retained and by virtue of that maintained by the condominium trust. So, this would simplify the decision. It's a bit of a reversion back to conversations we had months ago where the trust would, you know, maintain the fee on all of this land and then record a conservation restriction, which would run to the benefit of the Conservation Commission. But the town wouldn't own anything. All the, all the burden would stay on the applicant and then its successor, the condominium trust. So, that's version four. So, you can see each version sort of moves the line a little bit further and further until you ended version four, which is just the condo keeps everything. So, Martha, I didn't know if I missed anything that you wanted to add in terms of sort of the cost benefit of each one of the options, but I hope I covered everything, but feel free to jump in.
No, I think you covered it well. Thanks.
Yes, go ahead, Martha.
Should I keep these up or take them down now?
Um, let's maybe just, what we'll do is let's go to option one. And what I'm going to do is try to have a discussion with the board and go through each of the options and to see where people are with this. So, just to recap what Brian said with this option, the front part of the parcel, option one, would be open space maintained by the condo association. And the second part of the open space would be maintained by the town. If the town opted to take it, that's the other piece of this. Is that correct, Brian?
That's right. The decision only requires the applicant to offer it. It doesn't require the town to accept it, so it could still be refused.
Right. And so, again, with, with, I just want folks to keep in mind that if the town is, does, is offered it and does take it, then it's going to be responsible for maintaining those components, which it would be assuming. So, I just want to kind of get a sense from board members what their thought is with option one. And I'm going to start, Larry, with you. What's your thoughts on option one?
It's not the most objectionable, but, you know, I'll jump ahead. I think option four is probably the one that makes sense. You know, I mean, just, you know, for the town to maintain parcel B, having to go over the condominium property to get there. Yeah, it's awkward, I think.
So, you're just going to jump right and say?
I'm jumping right to version four.
Okay, well.
So, you don't have to ask me about two or three.
All right. Let me see what George is going to say. George?
I have very much the same thought about option four. That's a good one. Option one, I don't see the town jumping up and saying, we'll take responsibility of that property. That's time, expense, equipment involved, personnel. And they would say, too much cost. We don't think we want it. Thank you very much.
I agree 100%, George.
All right. I have two votes for option four before we get out of the gate. Woody, where are you, my friend?
I'm right here. Unfortunately, with A, in the way it's set up, it would be a burden on town, possibly on this option one here. So, unfortunately, I, I don't think, I see the town taking that as a, as a taking on the burden.
Okay.
So, not for option one.
Okay. Leslie, what's your thought?
I'm going to jump to number four immediately with one clarification question. If the condo association, if it's approved for the condo association to maintain control over that piece of property, will there be a covenant on that, that it cannot be built upon?
There would, there would be a long term, yes, that the.
A conservation restriction would be recorded and it runs in perpetuity.
Okay.
So, yes.
So, I think for the best interest of the town, I think number four releases them from the burden of having to do any kind of maintenance and expenditures on it.
Oh, great. Thank you. Mary, what's your feeling? What's your thoughts?
Keep it simple. Go to four. I'm with everybody. I really think it's important to just keep it simple.
Okay.
Things that don't need to be complicated.
All right. So, I'm going to come back to Woody. Woody, what do you think? Do we?
Oh. Option four, I agree, but I'm, we're going to run down all these, but everyone's jumped to option.
I know. They just didn't follow the lead. I don't know what it's about, Woody. Okay, so Martha, I think we can stop the screen sharing.
Okay.
So, appreciating that, I think then option four would be the way that we would be going, Brian, for our decision. Yeah, just for clarification, the rest of our decision, we basically have gone through and validated and accepted it.
That's right. Now, no substantive changes on anything else, but there are a couple of housekeeping matters we can touch on in a moment.
Okay. Why don't we touch on those housekeeping matters while we're, while we're, while we're in forward momentum?
Okay. With all deference to Ms. Taylor, do you want me to, I'll go through them if that's all right.
Yes, I think you've.
I have them in front of me. Just might be simpler. So, one of the conditions that the board had asked for, and somehow we were remiss in not putting it in. So, it was written. We just didn't put it in, is the exclusive use grading plan, just to make sure that the final plans are consistent with the grading plan shown on. So, there's going to be a condition included, and I'm just going to read it so you can all hear it and understand it. All grading on exclusive use areas one through nine shall be done in accordance with the approved OSRD grainy grading slash drainage plan sheets C 1.21 and C 1.22 of the approved OSRD condominium site plan to ensure stormwater drainage patterns are designed and not altered or adversely impacted during or after construction. Final grading plans for these exclusive use areas shall be presented to the planning director and the planning board's reviewing engineer per review prior to the issuance of building permits for the dwelling units. So, that was discussed at prior meetings. Shouldn't be controversial or surprise to anyone, but for some reason, we forgot to put that in. So, I just wanted to read it for everybody's benefit.
Let me just make sure everybody's comfortable. Larry, are you comfortable with that, sir?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Wonderful. Leslie, you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Wonderful. Woody, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thanks, Brian. Next.
You usually have a condition requiring a pre-construction meeting, and these are just boilerplate conditions you usually have. So, we would like to add that to your standard condition. There's another condition, just about inspection shall be carried out consistent with your protocol under your subdivision rules and regulations. I know this isn't a subdivision, but you usually have a, an inspections condition just requiring those. And these are things, you know, that are going to be done in any event. So, they're, they're very much boilerplate. Final post-construction as-built plans, you know, shall be completed and submitted before the final portion of any performance guarantee is released. Another standard condition, obviously, they're going to prepare and submit as-built before they seek to have their, whatever covenant or security they offer released and to get their C of O. So, that's all pretty standard.
Okay. Let me just make sure Larry comfortable with those additional three.
Yes.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Wonderful. Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Okay, great. Anything else, Brian?
That's it on my list unless, Martha, did I miss anything?
No, I think you got it all.
Okay, then that, that concludes my portion of the evening.
Well, if that is the case, and if I understand this correctly, we are at a point where we can vote on this decision and take this matter off our table. Martha, do you have anything final to say before I ask for a motion?
No, I guess I would only suggest seeing if any of the board members have any comments or questions about the rest of the decision.
Sure. Let's, let's do that. Larry? Okay, because we've been through this a couple of times. George, any additional?
None.
Wonderful. Leslie?
None.
Wonderful. Woody?
None.
Wonderful. Mary?
No.
Wonderful. Okay, then I, at this time, would entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the version four decision as prepared by and presented by town council and our town planner.
There's a motion, there's a second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, George?
None.
Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
On the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Wonderful. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How do you feel about this?
Yes.
Wonderful. The chair is in favor. At this time, I just want to take a moment to thank the board, to thank the public, to thank the applicant, to thank our councils. This has been a challenging project. It has been a long project. We have now hit a finish line. We have crossed the finish line. I wish everyone good luck with this project and continued harmony through our community as it continues. With that, thank you, everyone regarding 105 High Road.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Great. Thank you. Okay, continuing. Next to new business, I see that magical, none. Is that correct, Martha?
That is correct.
Okay. Next is planners' report.
Don't have too much tonight. Just a quick update on the solar and the landfill project. The applicant had hoped to have that ready for submission tonight. There were a few comments that needed to be picked up, so I'm anticipating that that will be on the next agenda, the November 30 agenda. And some of the other subdivisions that we've been talking about, nothing's ready to come before the board yet.
Okay.
There is one, one thing. I had been given a draft plan for division of the lot that contains the pink house at 60 Plum Island. I had been given a draft plan for division of the lot that contains the pink house at 60 Plum Island Turnpike.
Really?
And because of the lot line changes are basically causing the, the grandfathered status of the existing lot to be lost. That's going to go before the, the zoning board of appeals first to get a variance and then we'll come to the planning board for an approval not required. It's a, it's been a very complicated process on that. The support, the Pink House group has been working very hard on that one. And Rochelle Joseph, who's been heading that up, is actually going to be making a brief presentation to the ZBA tomorrow night on it and is hoping to have the variance, public hearing for the variance applications open on, at their November meeting. So if anybody's interested, that, that meeting tomorrow night will be in person, but if anybody's interested in sort of getting the overview.
And will there also be historical of the Pink House?
Um, historical.
Its history is why it was built and, and who lived there?
Uh, there's, I think, I think the concern really is more that it's iconic as opposed to sort of its history and, and architectural significance. So there, as part of this, there will be a preservation restriction placed on, on, on the building. So in perpetuity.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Very good.
And one, one more thing. I think I sent you all the list of CPTC workshops that are going to be offered this fall and early winter. So again, if anybody's interested in signing up, I encourage you to do so and, and they're usually very, very valuable. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Martha. Okay, we'll hear our reports. Select board report. Leslie?
Um, the select board last week, there was a long discussion on the possibility to move the COA to Kent Way, first floor. They are in discussion with the landlord at this time. The COA and the select board have both done a sidewalk and done a review and discussed some of the renovations that they'd like to do in order to make it a better facility. And it would be on a temporary basis, three to five years, and the monies would come from the COVID Act, the money that was provided to the town of, in 2.1 million, but they're only seeking $550,000 for the entirety of the rental and the renovations. The other thing they talked about the other night was that each board will be given the opportunity to vote as a board, whether they want to stay in on, in person or go to a remote situation to make the meetings easier for not only the boards, but as for the public itself going, considering the COVID and going into the winter months. Those were the two most valuable things that came out of the meeting.
Wonderful. Leslie, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Leslie, anyone? Okay, great. The ZBA, Larry?
Yes. Well, as Martha said, the ZBA is meeting tomorrow night. They do have one public hearing. It's for a special permit and finding regarding a garage at 6th Parker Street. Under old business, they'll be looking at the decision on AL Prime and I, I would presume if falls in order, approving that, voting on that. And Martha had already mentioned the informational meeting on the Pink House and they'll also get an update on the Pearson Drive 40B. So that may all be of interest to folks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Conservation met last night, Cricket Lane. It will be take, or the presentation will be taking place, I believe, at the next meeting. Looks like conservation is going to meetings every twice a month now, at least for the interim. That was one, one component. There's going to be a boatload of sand coming off of Plum Island to help. It looks like with some activities that sand is being dredged from the say it three times quickly, Martha.
This category.
Three times.
This category, this category, this category.
And it's, this, and it's going to be placed a certain amount of distance off the island in an attempt to help with sand replenishment to the beach. The beautiful part about this, it's all going to be at no cost to the community. So it's just a win-win. And so conservation signed off on that last night. The town's bathhouse came before conservation and I think that's going to be how did that end up last night? Does that continue?
They are looking for a little bit more information, the variance.
Very long.
Very long discussion.
Yes. Thank you for being there, Leslie, because you're, you're definitely my backup brain on that one. Other than that, those are the major items that would be of concern, I think, to the planning board. Martha, MBPC?
Actually, nothing. The commissioner's meeting is tomorrow.
Okay, great. With regards to meeting minutes.
So we had table the January 6 meeting minutes to give everybody a chance to review them. I don't know if you've done that and if you're have any comments or would be ready to approve.
Let me ask board members where they are with that. Larry, how are you with that?
I've reviewed it.
Okay. George?
I've reviewed it.
Wonderful. Leslie?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, Woody?
Same.
And Mary?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
A discussion on the motion, discussion, Larry?
Only to say that I'm going to abstain on so much of the minutes as related to AL Prime, because if you recall, I had a conflict on that.
Yes, okay. Wonderful. George?
No discussion.
Uh, Leslie, discussion?
None.
Discussion?
No.
Mary, discussion? On the minute side, you vote, Larry, with the
I'm standing on AL Prime. I otherwise vote yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, George?
Yes.
Wonderful. Leslie?
Yes.
Wonderful. Woody?
Yes.
Wonderful. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you. January 20th, 21 minutes. Have, has everyone had an opportunity to review?
Those haven't. Yeah, part ways. So, so.
Our next meeting, we should have those.
Yes, yeah.
What else do I have on the agenda? Now it's starting to scream my eyes wide. Is that the end of the agenda, Martha?
That is the end of the agenda.
Is it 7:37?
Yes.
George? All right. Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight, Martha?
Um, not, not that I can think of.
Okay, very good. Anyone, anyone have anything else?
No.
Okay, wonderful. I would entertain a motion then.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is our second.
The second.
Wonderful. Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Discussion on the motion, George?
None.
Discussion on the motion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion on the motion, Woody?
None and good night, everyone.
Mary, discussion. Okay, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yeah, yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night again, everyone.
Thank you, Woody. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes, and good night, Woody.
All right, wonderful. Everyone, thank you very much. I'm glad that 105 is behind us. Everyone, great evening. Thank you. Thank you, Emily.
Good night, everybody.
Nice. Thank you, Brian.
I'll let you know when it's ready for signature.
Very good. Thank you, everyone.